What you're going to approve tonight is a recommended request to the county commissioners. So I just wanted everyone to be clear in terms of what we're asking for tonight. We have several folks with us in the county tonight. Appreciate you ladies coming, Lisa Lord, Beth Schrader, who have better attendance at our board meeting than some of our senior staff does.
You're having a mutiny in the ranks.
Can't be nice, can you?
Can't be. There we go. All right. First names first. HB 13. As you're aware, the Senate passed their version of HB 13, which was sent back to the House for concurrence and then signed by the governor. HB 13, and this is why I'm glad it's done as a separate issue, was never part of our budget request per se. Remember, we had a $3.2 million fix for this if it didn't happen that was really outside of our budget request. That involved instructional coaches, art, music PE positions, and some other allotment adjustments. So our county budget request, and I know this is, it was the hot topic for a while, and there was some confusion about that, but this issue was separate from our budget piece. Any of you want to add to that? All right. And it's really a one-year fix.
Okay, now, clarify for the benefit of a lot of people watching what that allotment fix, um, a lot of people heard that, and it scared a lot of people. So, as it should. So HB 13 revision that's been passed, as you just said, um, what does that unravel in summary?
All right, for us next year, what it does is we allot those positions at a ratio of 1 to 20, the state does, and it gives you a plus three on your class size. So it allows us to basically stay close to where we are this year because we were closer to the state than most other districts were in terms of class size. Next year, after, after next year, they will go back to the original class sizes that were part of the law when we started this year. But the state has promised to have a special allotment for specialties, art, music, and PE. And so when you see the Senate budget, which is due out next week, there'll probably be a placeholder in there for the, of money for those arts and music positions for the following year. So we'll be, that means for us, numbers-wise, we'll be okay based on the Senate provision as long as they fund the art, as long as they have that separate funding for art, music, and PE.
So you are saying this coming year, it'll be a change in how much from where we are currently, and the following year, how much?
All right. It's not a huge change for us this year. In fact, it's almost a break even for us based on the legislation. Next year, it's going to reduce class size, which is fine because they've promised to fund specialty positions with a separate allotment.
And it will reduce class size, but from what, to what?
Can you hear me?
Okay, I see.
One to 19.
Yeah, we're at, right now, our formulas were 1 to 20 for kindergarten, 1 to 18 for first grade, and 1 to 19 at, at second and third. We're going to go 1 to 19 in all grades because it's the same number of positions, and that will, we'll have the difference between 19 and 20. We'll have just a little bit of room, not as much, you know, as, as we had had in the past, but we'll have a little bit of room so that the schools will have to be a little bit stricter in how they organize their classes, but that's the only change. We're not going to have to change the number of positions we have.
Now, the big issue is when you, after next year, the class sizes are coming down, art and music are still here, your big issue and big discussion is going to have to be facilities.
Well, back up a minute, though, I mean, we all, we also have to determine that the House is going to agree with all this.
They've already, sorry, the governor's signed it already.
This is approved.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yeah, went back to the House, it was a simple concurrence vote.
It was, okay, good.
Real quickly, before we move forward, you're talking, you talked about the HB 13 actually puts us on par for what we were doing. There were some jurisdictions that were not doing what we're doing, correct?
There are similar districts that are our size. We were talking about 48 positions. There were a couple districts that are literally almost the same size as ours who were talking about 160 positions.
And that's because, why is that? Why, how did, how were we doing it differently than some of these other places?
A lot of those folks were taking that, that slippage, that plus three, plus six, and using it to reduce class sizes at upper grades and not using it in the lower grades. So the law says you've got to do it in the lower grades on, on a hard cap. So now they've got to slide those positions back to lower grades, and it's causing them issues at the upper grades.
Which means 4 through 12, there are no caps.
Correct.
You can put as many kids as you want into 4 through 12.
Correct.
So it was, we had been partially adjusting as the state did, and so that's why this fix works for us for the next year.
But why won't that impact facilities? Because you said it would after next year.
Our formulas are already better than the fix, so we're okay for this one more year. The next year, well, year after next, it will have the same impact on facilities that we were anticipating for, for next year.
Yeah, the 1920 school year is when it will hit your facilities piece. We've had some conversations that we're, we're proposing a redistricting in two years as we complete our, our round the bond constructions. We might have to have a serious discussion about moving attendance lines to make this work next year at our elementary level. And I've always said we don't want to be awake and do redistricting every year, but it's going to put a strain on those, on, on, on some of our schools. And so the question is, do we do something at the elementary level and then do another one in two years? It's, it's probably not to bring a group together early next year and start having that facility discussion.
Well, you can see where it would be going once the new construction is through and changes hopefully could be made that you wouldn't, like you say, then turn around and have to redo later. They would already be there.
We could maybe anticipate some of those moves and make, and then try to limit the, the second round to what we would need to accommodate the new schools. But again, I said, I've never wanted to be a place that has to redistrict on a, on a, on an annual basis, but this may force us to, to move up our timeline a little. So I'll get with Eddie, I'll probably ask a couple of board members to put together a committee and, and look at that whole facility issue.
But that's still not, that's not going to fully solve our issues, is it?
No. And that's part of what we have to look at next year's budget request. Are we going to be requesting more trailers? We currently have 90 plu, when I got here, we had 80 mobile units. We're now over 90 and approaching 100.
There is some discussion of a possible state bond, but we don't, you know, that's still down the road.
That's still a four-year fix on that.
The other thing in addition to space is until the Senate releases their budget, and hopefully it'll be in there, the possible, as he said, placeholder for enhancement allocations, this new format. But until we know what that is, and is that at least 48 positions, we won't know the full impact on next year's positions, or year after next positions.
So we've, we've got a breathing space. We, I mean, I've got faith that the state says they're going to fund those positions, and they will. It just, solving one problem gives you a whole new set of problems.
They, they funded those positions previously, right? At one point, they were funded separately, correct?
Probably 15 years ago, art and music were in allotment unto themselves. That changed, uh, and so we're sort of going back to the old allotment, which, which makes some sense.
I may have missed this, but which, when it said the average class size, so, but it can't exceed 20, so that still means that we may have to have more combination classes?
Yeah, the average, that, that's what I was saying. The principals are going to have, the impact this year will be a much tighter class size control because in this, and we're going to have to report, though, on how we use every position in every school to the legislature this year. That's, that's a new piece of the compromise. But we cannot, the average for every grade can't exceed 20. So any class size that ex, that would exceed 20 is going to have to, we're setting up procedures in place. We're going to talk with the principals about it Thursday. They'll have to be approved by human resources so we can control that average and make sure the average doesn't go up. So, um, it'll be a little bit tighter than we're used to.
You'll have to be careful that you don't put, that you have classes that have some space in, in January if, if you get a transfer in. So you can't run all of your classes up to the max and then get a new one in January because when you, and under the state rules, you're going to have to create a new class.
Because there's no waiver at all.
Once you hit that, it's, it's a district average of 20 and individual classes of plus three. So if you've got a school that may be pushing several classes in the twenties, you've got to be careful.
Yeah, there is some, some process for individual waivers, but not for the class size average, not that I know of. I don't think there's any LEA class size average waiver at all.
Eddie, anything you want to say about the facility side?
So, so, um, I'm not quite through, I'm close. 48 new classrooms.
Probably in that neighborhood.
Okay, so the equivalent of 48 classrooms, you absorb some of that in the higher grades, so you shrink that down. How many classrooms in an elementary school?
Depends on the size, but typical class, about 20 per building.
How many?
Approximately 20 classrooms per building.
So it's the equivalent of two schools.
Just over.
Okay, and we get our funding for bricks and mortar from the county commissioners?
Correct.
Or we find space and operationally put additional trailers out there?
When Mr. Anderson looked at the impact for this year, it looked like 30 class, 30 additional classrooms would be needed.
You mentioned the state bond, a potential state bond?
Yes.
What, what would that cover?
The state bond is, is at least the initial discussions that I've heard would be in the neighborhood of about $25 million for New Hanover County. It's heavily weighted towards tier one and two economically disadvantaged counties. So 25 million would probably do a new elementary school, most likely spot River Lights where we've got the land that was part of that agreement, and then probably the physical building for the CTE High School. So that doesn't get you a whole lot right there.
What's the, what's the approximate cost of an elementary school?
Fifty, by the time that bond gets here, these, our current ones are running in the 14, so you're probably talking 15 or 16 by that time. All right. Now, that's it with HB 13, we haven't even got to the budget yet, so. All right. State budget, full class size reduction, we've talked about that.
Just the last bullet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get her. Here we go. Slide four, just some of the things that we're seeing that are driving our budget. When you look at what's driving our budget, there's very little new that we're asking for this year. Most of that is set up around the CTE High School. What is driving our budget are state increases, and state increases to several areas. We've seen an increase in certified salaries of about 24% over the last 10 years. So remember, we pay almost, we, we have 30, we have 600 locally paid employees, teachers, that we pay entirely with county funds. So when the state increases the salary for those state employees, we have to match that for those locally paid employees. You also pay a supplement that's a percentage. So if the state increases the salary, that 8% supplement that we're paying, obviously that, now that is 8% of a larger number. We've also seen non-certified salaries increase 11.4%. We've kept our base supplement of 8% the same, but that dollar amount still goes up as that's, as the base pay goes up. Another piece that we have seen is a huge increase in what we have to pay. 132% increase over the last 10 years in the retirement match for our employees. Their paycheck shows a 6% what they have to pay as part of their salary for retirement. We, as the employer, also have to put in a, a contribution. And our contribution right now is equal to about 16%.
16 and a half.
16 and a half percent of that teacher salary. So that means basically for every dollar they're putting in, we're matching that with almost $3 of our money. We've also, so that's 9% of our total operating budget. We've seen a 47% increase over the last 10 years in employee health insurance. $18 million, or about 7% of our budget is tied up in that. The total number of students that we serve has increased 11% in 10 years. While we've only seen a corresponding 5% growth in positions, which results obviously in larger classes and fewer support folks. So our budget is being squeezed by things that are really out of our control. Questions about this? So, we've set the class size issue aside. We still have to look at, given what the pressures that we're seeing from the state, which is just around the 2 points.
The state raises are, will ever two, and the total will ever three.
So we've still got $3 million in increases on what the state is doing to try to fix in our budget. So what we were looking at doing is sharing assistant principals at our smaller schools, sharing AIG positions, increasing secondary class size, eliminating technology assistance over two years and going to a regional approach. We actually, that's as much about a better service model, but it has costs, pieces with it. We're talking about eliminating high school graduation coaches, not by simply riffing them, but by attrition as they become vacant. We currently have two vacant, we would not fill those, and then as the other two become available, we would not fill those as well. Replacing certified ISS with non-certified personnel in those positions, again, through an attrition process.
Can you talk a little bit about, you've heard the comments from the audience today about the AIG positions?
Yeah, we actually fund AIG with a lot of local dollars.
We have 12 of our, I think currently 34 AIG positions are funded with local funds. So we were just reducing part of the local support. The, um, the state formula assumes 4% of our students would be identified AIG, and then they give, give a dollar amount per pupil, and, and it, it turns out that they can fund about 22 of the positions, and we were funding 12. So we, the original proposal, when we thought we were doing the K3 issue, was to reduce 10 of those positions, and we revised it to five because we were also trying to balance the budget and deal with K3. So we still have the budget balancing piece.
So those five that you're reducing are out of the 12 locals?
Yes, yes.
So the 22 still stay?
All of these formula changes are based on locally funded.
10 small schools, how much of, how many of those 10 small schools are Title I schools?
I would have to look, probably, more than half of our elementary schools are Title I schools, so it, probably more than half. And, um...
We, they fund 4%, but I know that we have more than 4% that are gifted. What, exactly what is the percentage of our, our population that's gifted?
Well, Sean, do you have that information, the percentage of our identified AIG students?
I do not, but Donna Sloan is here, and she does.
About 12%.
But the state does not look at individual LEAs and say, you have 12%, so we are going to fund like...
It's just a flat formula based on your total AIDM.
They say that statewide, about 4% of students should be identified as AIG, and that's how they fund it.
And what percent of the legislature would be in that category?
I don't even know if 4% would be gifted.
I don't think so.
We put the majority of our, of our, of these positions in K8. We do have two positions shared amongst the four high schools. Most of the high school support is through AP classes and additional higher-level classes that we offer.
And how, you, you were looking at a reduction of five, in, in dollar wise, how much money does that save?
335,000.
So an average of about, what's that, 60 plus a teacher?
And that salary and benefits, but yeah.
Just seems like that, especially in some of these smaller Title I schools that having those positions available, you know, some people in those schools probably need them more than some of the other schools. So I'm just wondering if we can look at that, or is there anything that we can, can do?
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we'll have to go back and take a look at, especially once we have a, a final county number.
Right.
Because like I said, this is about getting to a number that I can, we can recommend to the, to the county commissioners, but at the end, we'll come back and make the actual final pieces, probably in the July timeframe.
But shouldn't we also look at how many AIG students are in that particular school versus another school? One school might have five AIG students, and another school might have 100?
And we, we look, and that's, that's something to consider, but one of the reasons we, we've gone to the model that we, that we do have is, and you heard one of our teachers talking about the, the K2 nurturing piece, where we're trying to identify students. We, we identify AIGs in third grade, but we start doing the, some of that in nurturing identification in K2. And Ms. Sloan can give you a much better explanation on that than I can. So they, they may not have a high identified population, but we're working to try to identify some of those students. And in some of our high-poverty schools, the traditional method of identifying AIG doesn't work. And so that's why with the nurturing piece, identify some of those students prior to that. So I may have a school that has a lot of identified AIG, but they're getting additional services at some other schools to hopefully develop some of those skills that are, that are there. There's no good way to, to cut an AIG position.
Can, can any of the Title I funding support that program?
Then we're running into the whole supplant issue.
The school would have to choose how they wanted to, to use, you know, they, depending on what our formulas are, the school then goes back and revises their Title I plan, so that, that would have to be a school choice. I'm not sure Title I funds can be used for AIG, but we can certainly check that. The other thing we can do is, once we know the state, the, the actual state and county budget, you know, we can finalize these formulas. Right now, these are proposed formulas, so we can do preliminary allocations, so we need to do within our budget estimates. But before you finalize the budget, we can bring more information to you on that.
And just to follow up on what Ms. Nichols said, I think she had a good idea. If Title I schools can actually fund these, is there a way that we can redirect some of the funds that we're actually giving to some of these schools that are going to get a cut? Because I know we're, we're talking about supplanting, but my understanding is, is if every school has it, then you can't use Title I funds, correct?
You have to have a base allotment that is equal across the board.
Right.
And then they can choose what they do, as long as it's allowable within Title I, and we have to check that. They can go over and above. But we can't fund a non-Title I school with something that, you know, we don't give to a Title I school. So the formula that we developed was based on the number of students, so it was equitable. Clearly, none of these items that we're recommending to reduce, you know, would we, in a different budget year, would we be recommending?
Right.
This was just based on available funding, so.
And I was just, and what I was thinking is, is if you can redirect some of the funds and somehow figure out to get it into Title I, understanding that, you know, maybe reducing, you're reducing them by five, reducing them by three, you still may not fall into that supplanting part of Title I.
We can take another look at it and see, but once again, I'm not sure off the top of my head whether or not it's even allowable Title I expense, and we'll, we'll have to look that up.
Questions here before we move on? All right, so the recommended increase is, for us, is 2,750. And, and you'll always hear folks say, well, you always ask for more than, than you need. I will tell you, this is not a more-than-you-need request. This is basically what you need to keep what you got, and even, and not really keep everything you've got. We started moving towards 2,700 four years ago. Coming out of the recession, we wanted to get to 2,700 per pupil to get back to that pre-recession level, which we were close to 2,700. What's happened is we've never gotten there in the four years to that 2,700. So we've been behind every one of those years trying to get to that goal. We've now reached the point where the goal that we should have gotten to four years ago isn't enough. It's, uh, we've been hit by the state who's increased, they've been in this same kind of hole we've been in coming out of the recession, and they've accelerated their spending. You've seen the, the salary increases and the other costs that have come down to us. So we, we haven't matched what the state has been doing when it comes to pay for teachers, and it's put us in that hole that we're currently in.
What did we get this year from the county, per pupil?
Uh, 2,660.
Yeah. It was 2,660, but when we, we distribute based on first month, so at that point in time, between us and charters, it, it ended up being 2,662, so that's what we're building the change off of.
Does that include the charter schools?
Yeah. Our funding request includes charter schools.
About 4%, is that what you said?
Yes, yes, about 4% of our county funding is transferred directly to charter schools.
And it should be noted that according to the, an article in the, I guess in the Star News, they have no intentions of giving us 2,750 more, like they're talking about 2,670.
That, that is the county manager's proposal.
You know, I mean, that's, I, I thought we had made it very clear that 2,750, at best, was a break even. No, nothing greater, nothing less, but, you know, apparently the county, the county is talking about 2,670 and cutting property taxes at the same time.
Well, we've got several opportunities to, to talk to them and share, share our needs. We've got an opportunity to meet with them at the budget hearing.
No, they didn't hear us the last time. I don't know why, you know, I mean, I, 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 we've, we've talked to them. We have talked to them, we've been very clear about it. I, I mean, I don't know anything else we can do because we're at their mercy, but I am concerned that there is something of a blind eye. I know their theory is, well, we've got other things we have to help and all, but as I have said so often, a quality school system is the greatest driver of growth in any locale. And if the idea is they want to grow New Hanover County and all, they need to be funding our school system.
And I think the K3 issue complicated it for everyone this year, and so having the opportunity to sort, sort of explain how the fix will affect us and the budget proposal, I, I think we'll, we'll have that opportunity.
I think some folks saw the, okay, they fixed the K2 issue, so that fixed the budget issue. The K2 issue, the K2 issue was never a budget, never part of that budget discussion. It was another factor that drove some, some things we were going to do, but it wasn't driving what the county requests. Our fund balance, and this is why we have a fund balance, folks. We're looking to use some of our fund balance for one-time expenditures of $782,000 and recurring request of $554,000. I, using fund balance for a recurring request is not good practice.
Can you explain what a fund balance is?
A fund balance is basically, is your savings, what you've saved during the year. So if I'm going to hire 100 teachers for the year, that's what I'm budgeting, but maybe one of them leaves and I get a little bit of savings from that one teacher because I, I didn't have to pay a position for two months. Over time, that and other savings accumulates and builds up. So our policy has been to keep us, keep a fund balance of about 7%. That is barely a month's operating cost. And we do that because of things like, federal fiscal year is October. So they don't make their new, they don't build their budget until October, but we have federal employees that we've got to pay in August and September. So we actually end up carrying that in our own budget for, for a month or so until sometimes the federal budget catches up with us on those positions. Sometimes the state's a little slow when their budgets are bad to, to send their money to us. So we need that fund balance to cover that. Other things, it's also there in the case of an emergency. Hurricane Matthew's a prime example. If you go to Robinson County, you can, there is no central office yet. They were underwater, it has not been reopened yet. They have several schools that still, a year, over a year from now, still have not been able to reopen. They may get FEMA dollars at some point to reimburse them, but those local dollars help fill the gaps until some of those reimbursements come in. And if we have a fund balance on an emergency, it protects the county's fund balance as well. Because if we didn't have a fund balance, they'd have to use their fund balance to fund our emergency and their emergency as well. So it is protection in the emergency situation for the county. So there's a number of reasons why you have a fund balance.
One of the things the board did last year was in an effort to keep the fund balance from increasing in the future. Because basically it would go up and you would appropriate it for one-time things, and it wasn't up and down. We just, we estimated the amount that we think it would, we would not spend in each year based on things like he talked about, pop, you know, vacancies, those types of things. And we had built that in to fund recurring items. That's the 3.1 million. So the 1.3 is the additional amount that we want to appropriate, which will actually reduce the reserve. So instead of being, our, our proposal, instead of being closer to 7%, it'll be closer to 6%. So we are trying to, because we've heard the concerns, to try to reduce that some to get to, to what everybody feels is maybe a more appropriate level. But we are trying to keep it from growing, and, and so we, in, in past years, we tried not to use fund balance for recurring items. But we, we started doing that last year, and the items that we're adding above, those are not salaries, but they are recurring in nature, things like maintenance, contracts, and those kinds of things.
From, from a practical, sorry, from a practical standpoint, let's say you're Robinson County, who I assume has exhausted a majority of their, whatever fund balance they have. a majority of their, whatever fund balance they have. Each, each LEA has a different fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Depends on, so from a practical standpoint, let's say you're Robinson County, and you've exhausted your entire fund balance. What do you do?
You have to go to the county and ask for it. And if they don't have it, or they don't think that your request is a valid request, they don't have to fund it. It sort of puts you at the mercy of the county commissioners.
That's a great question. I guess my question, or I guess the magnitude of the issue, is we have, how many students now, twenty?
Twenty-six-five approximately.
Twenty-six thousand five hundred. And that's, how many schools?
Forty-four schools.
Forty-four schools. And so as you approach that, and you're spending down to six percent of your budget, and I think what you were saying a little bit ago, that one twelfth would be, one month would be eight percent. So you're down below one month. So I'm asking Mary Hazel, as our chief financial officer, at what level, at what point, do you throw your hands up and say, we can't go further than that? What, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but we're at critical mass here, so.
Ideally, I was much more comfortable with seven percent, but I also know, both from the state and the county level, there have been concerns, because we are one of the counties, you said every county has their per amounts, that has a healthier fund balance. We are very conservative in the way we plan, and so that has allowed us for that to grow. At the point that it starts affecting state and local funding, you know, that we're just trying to balance those concerns. So if it's going to keep us from getting recurring funds because they think that we're holding too much, you know, that, that's what we're trying to balance.
So, but you didn't answer my question. At what point do you, are you not willing to go below?
I wouldn't bring a recommendation that I wouldn't be willing to go. He might, but I would tell you. So I, I can live with this.
I've never wrote a recommendation that Mary Hazel doesn't like.
It's not my ideal, but it's within my comfort level.
But we're getting closer to it.
We are getting close to that number, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I think probably needs to be said, is that as we, as we've witnessed the last two years, we've got a very active state government. And oftentimes, when they make well-intended decisions, they have unintended consequences that make it extraordinarily difficult. And I'll just say to you, as someone who's been on the county government side and now on the school system side, I am not in favor of spending our fund balance down below six percent. I think it would be foolhardy on our part to set ourselves up where we would not be able to operate without going to the county commissioners and asking them to bail us out. So I just go on record as saying that because I think it's important that people know, we are at a very low point. The well-intended actions of the state to raise much-needed raises for teachers, and we are, we applaud that, have unintended consequences that we're seeing today. And that's why you're showing the many things that we're having to cut in order to make this work. And at twenty seven, twenty-six seventy, is that where we are?
That was the county manager's recommendation.
County commissioners, then we are having to make major cuts.
Where, that recommendation puts us at just over two million dollars short.
Short of, of what we're proposing. So we would have to come back if that was the final amount approved, and we would have to cut another two million.
Of course, and I would just also add to what Mr. Shale's concerns, which I agree with, is that what I'm really concerned about also is how many mobile units we have in our system, how many schools that really equates to. The expense involved in that, plus with the possible increase, well, the impact that it'll have on capital needs in the future, that, and the way we're growing here, we're projected, what, twenty-seven thousand very quickly, that's another five hundred students, that's another school. It's just, it's almost bewildering when you think, well, of course, it could be worse. We could be White County, I guess. That's the bright spot here, we're not White County.
I mean, the good thing is, we're a place that people want to, want to move to, and that is something you celebrate. But those folks moving here create demands, and we, as a school system, have to meet the demands of those folks who are bringing their students here to educate them to a high level.
Go ahead.
We are a high-performing school system. It happens because of the quality of the people we have, our eight percent supplement helps fund that. It happens because of the generosity of the county. They are one of the, they've been a great partner in terms of working with us over the years. But we're at that sort of a critical point now, where if we're going to continue the successes that we've had, it's going to take a greater commitment on the part of everybody.
That's one of the reasons, we talked about the, I think it's slightly over seven hundred local positions we have. You know, that, that's a problem not every county has. Not every county has the seven hundred positions, but that's, those positions have helped us get to the point that we, we are high performing. And so it, we, we tried to bring a recommendation that was a balance of some cuts, as, as well as, you know, focusing the funding where we thought your priorities were.
All right, that's the operating side. That's the day-to-day business of what we do. Then the capital side are the buildings, the maintenance, those one-time requests. As you can see, our county capital overlay request is three point five million. The recommendation that you've read in the paper was two million. We asked the county to fund things that we cannot fund from other sources. Lottery will not let you do technology. It won't let you do mobile units. So there are things that we ask for out of the county budget that's not available from other sources. A one point five million hit to our capital will directly impact school technology, because there's no other real source for technology funding.
The state gives us about four hundred thousand a year to support the technology plan, and, and they are requiring that we move forward with the digital plan, it's one of those unfunded mandates, but they don't provide the equipment that we need.
The largest capital request locally is technology at two point two million.
Was there any reason for the two million number?
The total, I guess, three million for technology is tied to us trying to replace desktops, laptops, and iPads, and we're trying to replace, let's see if I can get this right, Don's looking at me. I think we're trying to do a seven-year replacement on desktops and a six to eight-year replacement, or maybe it's five to seven, five, five to seven year on the iPads and the laptops. That replacement is really well past their life, but that is what we're just trying to get to with this recommendation. This would be a recurring need so that we could replace those every, you know, every year.
Well, she, I think she was asking the county rationale.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll go to their May eleventh work session and, and be able to ask questions, and I think we'll get a better idea of what the, what the rationale behind that was.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right.
Well, I think the point was, of her question was, there's a two million dollar manager's budget, and you're asking for three and a half million. So there's a million and a half difference. So I think that's kind of the implied point, right?
Well, I mean, the implied point is, the two million doesn't match up to anything. It won't, it won't fund anything on here, and so it just seems to have been snatched from the air. I'm just wondering what air he snatched it from, so that's kind of my point, so.
And that's a question we'll ask at the, on May eleventh.
Good.
So our total county, our, our total revenue summary, our current is the first line, is sixty-nine million, almost seventy million dollars that we received from the county this year. Charters got two point eight, almost three million dollars. So the total in virtual charters, so this year, it was seventy-two point eight million, almost seventy-three million dollars. If you looked at projected growth at a per pupil rate, that's an increase of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, using the current, this year formula. If you had the eighty-eight dollars per pupil that we're talking about, that's an additional two point three million dollars. So at the requested increase of twenty-seven fifty, it would be three point one million we're asking for additionally from the county, of which ninety-four thousand, the charters would get ninety-four thousand, for a total increase of three point two is what we're requesting from the county. It's a four point six percent overall increase, a three percent increase for charters. So a total request from us would be at seventy-three one six three.
And the only reason our percentage increase would be growing at a greater rate than charters is because of the pupil, the student growth. They are not, the state is not anticipating student growth for them. There is another charter opening, we don't have estimates for how many of our students would go to that, so that, that could change that number.
Can you send us an email telling us what all the different charters are?
Sure. All right, so projected county funding for the bond, because even, we talked about operating in capital, but because of bonds, they do, there is an obligation that the county has to pay those bonds. Principal on the bonds is about sixteen million, interest of just over six million service charges. So we've got a total of just, just over twenty-three million dollars in bond debt. That's a number, if you look at it long-term and scheduled because of the recent bond, to jump up, but then it'll start dropping off as some of the older bonds come off. So it's a summary of all the requests. Operating request, capital request, debt, and pre-debt. So what I'm asking for the board tonight is to approve our request of twenty-seven fifty to the county manager. And again, that's not a final number, once we have Senate numbers and actual, from the county, we'll do a final budget piece in July.
Can you explain one thing about the county debt? Of twenty-two or, question twenty-three and some change? You said that that's going to go down at some point, correct?
Yeah, if you look at the long-term debt in terms of what we're paying, obviously with the addition of this bond, there's a spike up with this, but there are some older bonds that are due to start retiring in, I believe it's three years. And so you'll see some of those coming off.
What, what, how much money would that be, would you, in three years?
I don't have the chart in front of me, but I'd be happy to send it to you.
Okay. And will that, and I guess?
We can get that from the county, a long-term summary of what will be happening in future years for you.
Okay.
Because we, when we were talking about the bonds, one of the things we were sharing is that long-term picture, and it does look like it's uphill, and then it starts to drop.
Will that reduce the amount that we're asking for the county for county funding? Or will we keep that amount and that be re-appropriated into other things?
The debt is not actually in our request, we just report that to you, that is part of the county budget.
All right.
Let me offer, maybe, I hope this will help. When the, when the county government issues debt, for, so for example, if Mr., we've got a hundred and sixty million to issue, Mr. Anderson gets approval by the board, say to issue fifty million dollars. We've got a hundred and ten left to issue. So he, he issues the fifty, meaning that the county sells the bonds, sets an interest rate, they know what their principal and interest payments are, and they schedule that over twenty years. And then, let's say, and he's actively working on those projects. When he gets to a certain percentage of that fifty million spent, and he's planned out what, what his projects are next, then he comes back to this board and says, whatever that number is of the hundred and ten left, he said, I, we need to issue, let's just make up a number, another fifty. And so we'll go back to the county, and all of that is scheduled. So from the county's side of the equation, they're managing their debt, meaning they're looking at what they've got to cover in principal and interest payments each year, and they plot that out. And I looked at this last year, and they've got other debt that's dropping off pretty quickly in two thousand and twenty-one. But they've got some pretty steady growth from seventeen to twenty-one, or now we're into eighteen, eighteen to twenty-one. So there's a, there's a little bit of a burden during that period of time. So the county's got options that, I won't get into their business, but they have options on how they can look at that and how they can minimize that to keep that rate down, because there's always that thing called a property tax rate. And so as, as all of that is looked at, I mean, we're looking on the, at the one piece of the puzzle, and that's the school debt, but they're looking at, at all the debt that they have and things that they have on the horizon, like maybe a jail expansion or whatever they have, that they have to look at. So all of that goes into the equation. But we do know, based on what's been issued, what's going to be issued by, by Mr. Anderson's actions, that two thousand and twenty-one, that's a pretty strong spike going down. So the burden, as I see it, is on the county commissioners for the next three years.
So it's like borrowing, basically borrowing, out of mortgage on our house. Borrowing money, county is holding the note, and they're the ones that are, we're borrowing from.
That twenty-two million includes parts of three different bonds.
Okay.
The ones that we just passed, and then the two previous bond campaigns that were, that are ten, ones over ten years, and one, I think, was fifteen years, Eddie? The last two bond campaigns before this one.
And that's why you have property tax increase.
Yeah, so what? Yeah, so those are, you've got some ninety-seven debt and some two thousand and five debt.
But with all your growth that's taking place, as far as all the new construction, apartment complex, et cetera, what's that doing to the amount of revenue that property taxes would be bringing in? Isn't that quite a growth?
Well, if you look, if you look at the, the current recommendation from the county, it's a fifty-seven cent recommendation, current tax rate is sixty-three, is sixty-one, I believe. The break-even point was around fifty-eight, so they're actually looking at a penny less than revenue neutral, approximately.
We are in a vice.
We are.
And being in a vice, we have to have some relief. And if we don't have relief, then we are squeezed, and we have to eliminate positions, eliminate programs, cut down on things, because if we are required by the federal government to have certain mandates, by the state government to have certain mandates, then the money has to come from somewhere.
And eighty-five percent of our budget is people.
Mr. Shale?
Just a minute.
Has your viewpoint on school funding changed since you've been on the board? I'm just curious.
My viewpoint on funding hasn't changed. My knowledge of what the school needs are has changed dramatically. And as you visit schools and you see what the, and, and you get schooled by, by Tim and Mary Hazel, then you, you see things, you, you realize it's not just a number, it's the success of the school with those children in those classrooms. And it does make a difference. You know, you hear the, you hear the comment, well, you can't throw enough money at it. And that's not what we're asking here. We're asking for the funds to meet our minimum requirements. And then if we can't get that, then we'll have to cut positions. We understand that. I mean, we're, we're, we're all professionals, and we all need to do what we need to do. But you're, but no, I understand the, the county side, I had twenty-five years in that, and I understand a whole lot better this side of it.
Well, I appreciate your viewpoint and your knowledge on the county side. You've been very helpful on this board.
Well, thank you, but I, I think tonight, one of the things that we heard over and over was those AIG folks. It doesn't get any more emotional than what they go through and how the schools are helpful in their success. So if even, you know, cutting five positions there is dramatic, and you say, well, goodness gracious, you've got thirty-six hundred people, you can cut five positions. Yes, you can, but when you do, there's pain that comes with it, and unless you're up close to it and see it, you don't understand that. And it's, I've been on that side, and I appreciate, you don't know how much I appreciate the two of you being here.
Well, and then you hear the story.
But that is the issue.
Then you hear the story of the mother from pre-debt, who was homeless, and what pre-debt did for her. And so you see that pre-debt item in this budget, and you see the value of those. When you make a cut in a program, there is no easy cut. So you have to look at all of those impacts, or you start to look at, do you pass cost on to, to parents? Do we have to start charging for things like athletics to make up revenue? And that brings with it its own set of issues. So I'm asking that we, we do, we make the request for twenty-seven fifty. I would emphasize to everyone who's listening tonight, this is not going to the used car lot and expecting to get cut ten percent at the end. Twenty-seven fifty is the request that we need to provide the services that we, that Twenty-seven fifty is the request that we need to provide the services that we currently are providing.
And that difference between twenty-six seventy and twenty-seven fifty is eighty dollars a child?
Two-point-one million dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That's the reason why I'm asking those questions. I know both of y'all have gone over this budget and made sure to, obviously, trim what we need to trim and, you know, making recommendations for eliminating certain positions, but if we don't get twenty-seven fifty and we get whatever we get, you know, and I know you will, but we just need to keep making sure, because as we heard today, we heard from pre-debt and AIG, and there's so many more programs that are so important, and ultimately, that's what we're here for, to make sure we can provide-
All right, that's a good ending point for that one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ask for the request of the superintendent from the county.
Twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars per student.
And three-point-five million in capital.
I second that.
And four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars in pre-debt. We're actually approving this front cover sheet here.
And how much of our fund balance would we be using with that, even if we got twenty-seven fifty?
We would be using an additional one-point-two million to add the three-point-one.
Can we cut it down to what percent?
Just over six percent.
What, just before we, before we vote on anything, what about the three-point-five million for capital?
That's part of the request.
That's included.
Well, that's not into twenty-seven fifty, though, is it?
No.
No, that's not-
No, that's in the request.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We do, per people for operating, we do capital as a separate total number.
Okay, so the question I'm asking is, before we have a motion, and, well, we've got a motion in a second, although, before we vote on this, do we vote on the twenty-seven fifty and thirty-five, three-point-five million, or do we vote on the twenty-seven fifty first, and then a separate vote on the three-point-five?
That would be your calls, which way you want to do it. You can do it together or separate.
We're asking for the front sheet.
We're asking for the total of eighty million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred and two dollars. That's the total of those two.
Okay, so eighty million, I've lost it.
I need a motion to approve a request for eighty million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred and two dollars, which will include operating, capital, and pre-debt.
Okay, I see it.
And that's my request.
Okay. Your second, okay. Everybody understand?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion?
I think we've had a lot of discussion. I think we've had a lot of discussions.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of requesting eighty million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred and two dollars from the county commission for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your knowledge.
All right, next item on the agenda, certified personnel recommended for one-year contract, Appendix K, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recommend the board approves the presentation concerning certified staff members who've met state and local requirements to continue employment for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year on one-year contracts.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. C, gifted advisory annual report, Appendix L, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Annually, we bring to you the gifted advisory council annual report, and we would ask the board's acceptance of this report. But before you do that, we do have remarks that would, from our GAC Gifted Advisory Council chairperson, Ms. Michelle Manis. She'd like to share some remarks.
As Dr. Markley mentioned, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and if you can remember about three hours ago, this room was filled, filled with a number of reasons to thank a teacher, a gifted specialist. It's amazing how many people were here tonight in response to that. As you've heard earlier tonight and read in our annual report, implementation of New Hanover County AIG programming and our AIG specialists have made a tremendous impact this school year alone. The GAC has been diligent in its mission to advocate for gifted education. Through our school visits, we've seen firsthand the impact of one gifted specialist. Tonight, the GAC would like to thank the school board for its continued support, and we would ask that that support continue through the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. Our recommendations are one. We ask that you continue to fund one full-time specialist at each elementary, middle, and high school, traditional high school. Please allow us to continue to be a leader in gifted education at the state level. Thank you again for your support.
And so I would ask the board's acceptance of the gifted advisory council report.
Okay, motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next item, surplus list, Appendix N, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board's approval of this listing of property which is no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes. We recommend that these items be sold at auction scheduled for May twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, at ten a.m., pending your approval.
Move for approval?
It's not gonna-
I have a question.
Okay, well, I've got a motion in a second. Okay, you have a question.
Why is this under your department now instead of Mr. Anderson's?
The purchasing department was transferred back to finance under the finance division when Mr. Hans retired.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, vocational rehabilitation cooperative agreement, Appendix O, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the board, we have a longstanding agreement with Vote Rehab, and we ask that you approve this agreement. As you can see, it impacts a number of our children, and it also leverages a good bit of funding for them that is needed for job skills training. So we recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, utility easement agreement with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority at Hoggard High School, Appendix P, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cape Fear Public Utility Authority is requesting one permanent and one temporary utility easement over a portion of the property along Shipyard Boulevard at Hoggard High School. The easement is for maintenance and repair of a sewer force main. In exchange for the easement, the utility authority has offered the Board of Education seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-six dollars. You may recall, this same request was before the board on February second, two thousand and sixteen, and approved. But since then, the utility authority's project has changed, which required a change in the easement. So if approved, this easement will replace the previous easement document, and we present this and recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just one, just one, please. You're saying that there's seventy-four-hundred-and-six dollars being paid for that easement?
Yes, sir.
Is that something we typically do?
Yes, sir. With the utility, if it's not our request, in other words, if we were building a facility, and we had to extend utility lines, then we would be paying for that, and we would be granting those easements to the utility authority at no cost. This is for the repair and maintenance of an existing system. It does serve parts of Hoggard High School, but it's not a result of any construction that the school system's doing. So that is typical.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Just one, so there's nothing additional being built, it's just replacing an existing pump station, is that correct?
That's correct. They're doing some repair and maintenance to an existing pump station and a force main line which runs up Shipyard Boulevard.
And it shows that the easement wouldn't interfere with any current or future building plans at Hoggard, correct?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item is the selection of a construction management risk firm for Myrtle Grove Middle School renovation and Roland Grice School renovation, Appendix Q, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Tonight, we are asking the Board of Education select the construction management risk companies. For Myrtle Grove Middle School, Roland Grice Middle School renovations, these two projects are included in the two thousand and fourteen bond. Project announcement was advertised on February nineteenth of this year. Five companies responded. Pre-selection committee reviewed all the companies, we interviewed, or the company responses, interviewed four companies, and we are recommending Montith Construction Company or Corporation for Myrtle Grove Middle School renovations, and WM Jordan Company Incorporated for Roland Grice Middle School.
Move for approval?
I have a motion in a second, got a second, okay. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Schell.
I see in the material, Mr. Anderson, anticipated construction cost of nine million, I believe, on Roland Grice, and six-point-nine million on Myrtle Grove. How do these companies receive compensation, these construction managers at risk?
If approved, if the selection is approved tonight, we will then negotiate fees and bring that contract back to you for approval at the June meeting.
I see, so you're really asking for permission to negotiate?
That's correct. We're only asking for, this, this as defined by the general statute, has to go through a selection process, and then, once you pick the qualified firm, then you negotiate a fee.
Thank you. I have a question. It says the completion date on both of these look at like August of two thousand and nineteen, which obviously would coincide with the opening of the nineteen-twenty school year. Is there anything that we can do to maybe, when negotiating the contract, to possibly start construction sooner, so we don't get into a delay? Any delays that may hinder the opening of the nineteen-twenty school years? I know people are going to still be going to school while we're making these renovations at these schools.
The benefit of construction management at risk is that we're bringing that construction manager on at the same time we're bringing the design team on board. So we are just now starting the design process, but actually, it's a very good question, and we discussed it at one of our meetings. As we go through the design process, we really do want to look at every possibility to expedite the design so we can get started earlier.
Right.
And do exactly as you say, ensure that we take full advantage of two summers and we complete before the start of the school year.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, consideration of bids for Blair Elementary School replacement, Appendix R, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're very excited tonight to bring you the next two items. This first one is Blair Elementary replacement. This is one of the two thousand and fourteen bond projects. Tonight, we're presenting bids for construction and recommend award to Bordeaux Construction Company in the amount of fifteen million, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. These are the people doing Laney, right?
Bordeaux Construction is currently finishing up Porter's Neck.
Oh, Porter's Neck, I'm sorry, okay.
And they also were the contractor for Snipes Academy.
Okay, and y'all are satisfied with them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other question? Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson, you've got a budget of seventeen-point-nine million, and this award is fifteen-point-one, leaving one-point-eight million. And you've designated how you would use those funds, and I think Ms. Small had talked about, we had approved a budget amendment earlier. Is that tying into this?
Yes, sir, that budget amendment is included in these numbers.
So the budget was increased to get to, by the eight-hundred, to get to seventeen-point-nine million?
Yes, sir.
And, and do you feel that you have the funds to complete the project with this?
I do. I think that that budget transfer, it does fully fund both Blair and College Park, and leaves us some contingency in construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, consideration of bids for College Park Elementary School replacement, Appendix S, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, this is the second project in the two thousand and fourteen bond program. This is a replacement for College Park Elementary School, and tonight, we're presenting bids for construction, and we recommend award to Montith Construction Corporation in the amount of thirteen million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars. I will point out that on the cover page, it actually says Bordeaux Construction Company. The second page and all the backup is correct. But we are recommending this award to Montith Construction Corporation.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Questions? Yes, Mr. Schell.
I like I'm beating the drum here, I don't mean to. But with College Park and Blair, you're having to tear those, demolish those buildings and rebuild, is that right?
That's correct.
And when, I believe the demolition materials could go to the county without a tip fee, have you allowed for that?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We actually put that in our bid documents, along with the form that the contractor, you know, has to fill out, and we bring that up at our pre-construction conference so that the bidders are aware of that in preparing their bid.
Thank you. One question.
Yes.
When do you expect the construction to actually start?
Well, our, in general, our plan is in June to move the schools, Blair and College Park, to move them out. July, we'll be doing some asbestos abatement work. August is demolition month, and then we hope new construction will probably start end of August.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Excuse me. Item K, consideration of professional service agreement for geotechnical material testing and special inspection at College Park Elementary School replacement, Appendix T, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Selection of professional firms for geotechnical material testing and special inspection services included in the two thousand and fourteen bond program were made at the Board of Education meeting on October sixth of two thousand and fifteen. Tonight, we're requesting you approve the contract for these services on College Park Elementary School. We recommend award of the contract to SNME in the amount of a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars.
Move for approval?
Second. Have a motion in a second. In twenty awards or less, what is this? What are they doing?
The North Carolina Building Code requires third-party inspections of construction, work in progress, and material testing. So they may be testing anything from soil compaction to- So they may be testing anything from, uh, soil compaction to, uh, to mortar and structural steel connections. So these are testing services and special inspection services during construction.
So, I guess my question then is, why is it only College Park? Why wouldn't Blair be included also?
We're gonna bring Blair at the June meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we do this on, on all of our construction projects.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, consideration of bid for Blair Elementary School asbestos abatement, appendix U, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned earlier, asbestos abatement is part of the, of our, uh, uh, projects for replacement of these elementary schools. Uh, this is asbestos abatement for demolition of Blair Elementary School. It is included as part of the project in the two thousand fourteen bond. Uh, bids were received on April sixth of this year, and we recommend award of the contract to NEO Corporation in the amount of sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item M, consideration of bids for New Hanover County, New Hanover High School cafeteria serving line renovation, appendix V, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, this is our final item. The, this is renovations of the cafeteria serving line. It was considered and approved in the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen capital budget. Uh, bids were received on April sixth of two thousand seventeen, and we recommend award to Stonehenge Builders in the amount of a hundred, one hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, uh, how's it gonna be different when you're through with it?
Well, um, the main difference is this will be a new serving line, new equipment. Uh, we're gonna be putting this in a new configuration, so the construction will, will, uh, adjust, uh, the plumbing, electrical utilities along with that. Also, as part of this project, they'll be painting, uh, replacing the ceiling tile in the entire, uh, dining area and, um, cleaning the terr- existing terrazzo floor.
Okay. Any other questions?
Briefly, Mr. Anderson, I've spoken to several principals, and I know this is a little bit different, and this is a high school with a lot more students and, uh, than some elementary schools, but, um, is there a way, when you're designing these, to, are you maximizing the amount of people that we can serve, um, thereby, and I, I think you've talked about that, but, um, we had talked about splitting maybe, uh, a cafeteria too, so you can have two service lines going at the same time. Um, is that something that you're doing here? It says, looks like you're, you came up with a new configuration.
Well, this, this will, um, more, expedite getting students through the, uh, the serving line, uh, increasing efficiency, um, and so that, that is one of the reasons that we're bringing this particular project. Uh, other projects, though, you, you are limited by the cafeteria side.
Right.
You know, you can, um, I may be able to run students through the serving line more quickly, but if I don't have the seats to, to seat them, then it, it's really of no benefit. Um, so those two things have to go hand in hand in planning and designing our cafeterias at all schools at all levels.
I think we had this discussion one time before, but there is no ability to expand the cafeteria at New Hanover, is that correct?
Um, it, it is a very difficult thing to do, um, you know, given the, the location of that space. Uh, there is a master plan that was developed for New Hanover High School, um, I believe in two thousand one, uh, which does show a, a new cafeteria being added, uh, or new kitchen. And then the existing kitchen, uh, would become, would be renovated, uh, as seating space, which would offer some, uh, expansion. But it's, it's a very di- like I said, it's a very difficult thing to do because it's, it's almost at a, a, a split level, uh, that site, where you enter the cafeteria, um, at grade on the backside of that, that building, uh, Princess, you're actually, um, you know, as much as maybe ten feet below grade.
Yes. What is being done here, something that could be incorporated, should you decide to do that or to maybe expand out into that courtyard a little bit?
Well, certainly, all of the equipment and, uh, and things we would purchase in replacing the service line, uh, could be reused.
Okay.
I guess closing Princess Street would be out of the question, right?
Princess Street, what?
Like we did on Eleventh Street over there, shut that off behind Welliston, I guess Princess Street, I mean, that would, they wouldn't consider that one.
I wouldn't say it's impossible, but like I said, it would be a very difficult project.
I think so.
Or I could put a, you know, swing it up and let people drive underneath it. All right. Okay, uh, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, call it orders for non-agenda items, I have had no one sign up. Uh, next item on the, uh, agenda is correspondence. Anybody wanna share anything?
I would just remind folks about tomorrow and, uh, come meet some incredible students. If they're anything like the one we met at our last meeting, you'll be impressed.
Announcements, uh, the only announcement we have right now is the regular, next regular meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, June sixth, at five-thirty, here in the BOE Center at, uh, here on Thirteenth Street. Uh, I don't know, some of you may have been contacted, I think there's a closed session on the ninth for a hearing.
Two hearings.
Huh?
Two hearings.
Oh, I thought it was one.
One and five. There are two hearings.
Oh. There was one, now it's two.
Apparently, I didn't get notified about the second.
You didn't read your email today.
They were back-to-back emails.
They didn't call one-eight-hundred, Ed, they, they failed to do that.
No, I mean-
It was just added today.
I responded to the one, I would have noted, and I did respond to the one. I missed the second one, I mean, I don't know if my, my computer's gotten so goofy lately. Anyway, all right, if there's nothing else, do I have-
I just tell you, Saturday morning, come out to, uh, Ashley High School for the fifth annual teacher trial. It's part of our wellness program. You can see some of our great teachers and students and run or walk a five K.
They're camping out this time, aren't they, again? Are they starting some spending the night?
No, we don't have anyone spending the night. Col- the Colin Hackman will be there at four in the morning, they'll set it up.
Oh, okay. I, I thought I read where they were-
That was relay flight.
Oh, okay, this is different, this is, yeah, okay.
I move, we adjourn.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.